And replace it for new or just remove it as there are two bridges next to each other. But something we're going to have to do a bit of looking into and come back to the next meeting for.
Yeah. And we're now on YouTube streaming live, councillor Stutchbury.
Yeah, having walked under both bridges recently, which at a fortunate point been in my waders. They don't look from the nape of eye like that, even the bridge that Ryspace obviously refers to. It isn't, it doesn't look in too bad a condition. One did have a good look at it from underneath because it's been discussed and I looked at the other. By no means is it, it eminently fall into bits or anything. It looks quite solid apart from the age of the wood and the timber which is on it. So don't think it's that bad, you could see clearly from underneath. I'm quite willing to lend Lee me waders if he wants to have a paddle under there when the water level drops. Because you can see so much more from in the river, looking up at the bottom of the bridge. It's a view that not many of us get to see and I did fortunately see it. I took time to look at it and go under the bank because I'd be, you know, I think it's probably got a lot more life left in it than we first would envisage. I'd be reluctant to make any rash decisions on that one.
We had a report on it, didn't we, that said about it, Lee?
Yeah, I was going to come back and say we had the structural survey done and the two bridges are of a very different construction. The one that has failed is a laminate construction, which where it sits on the two concrete rafters either side is rotting really badly. Sort of from the inside almost, whereas the other one is made of solid timber beams. Is a different, for some reason, a very different construction to the one that is failing. And the nature of the way that the other one's built is more repairable, for a better term. You can replace the large timbers, but where it is a laminate construction, it is quite difficult to repair it. Which is why the survey came back saying, you know, of course you can repair it, but the cost, the cost involved in repairing it and the lifespan that you'd have after you've done that repair. It's almost written off, you know, if there's a car, you write it off kind of thing. Whereas the other ones, this is why we've gone down this route, all the other ones. You can get the lifespan out of them once you've repaired them.
Yeah, and Lisa.
Thank you, Chair. So before anything like removal of the bridges done, I wondered if we would at least go out to public and see what their thoughts are on that. But another thought is, could we not go out for funding ourselves, maybe section 106? Or something to replace the bridge? I mean, if the Swan Leisure Centre can get two dips into the park. Both bridges are used by many people in the park and cutting through the park. It'd just be a shame to lose one. I know they're not far away from each other, but it would be a shame to lose one if there's any way we could go out for funding.
Councillor Smith, sorry, Mike.
I thought this was going to be discussed in detail at the next meeting.
Yeah.
That's what you said, I think, Chairman.
Yeah.
Why don't we leave it and discuss it at the next meeting?
Yes.
I would actually find it helpful if the papers surrounding that topic, Lee, if you could resubmit the report on the bridges.
Yeah.
Because I doubt I can find my old copy.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, we'll do that and we'll put that on the next agenda. Lee's making notes about it, thank you. Item eight, the potential BMX and scooter track location. And you've had the written report, which basically says there's not enough room at Lace Hill. Morton Road Phase Three were against that planning application anyway. And Hartlands. Although in the early days, Aylesbury Vale were very helpful at suggesting the site for us. More recently, they've been saying that it's not suitable for the track. Mike.
I'm just a little bit confused because I don't know the terminology and how it's used in that. But my understanding is that a BMX track is something very different to a skate park come scooter facility.
Yep.
Is that right?
Yeah, I think certainly when we were talking about it, it was going to be, you know, the land bulldozed up and down and as you see them doing the BMX. They were in the last Olympics, weren't they, doing it? And so it's sort of hilly and not sort of a smooth surface.
So are we therefore not really considering the existing skate park to be modified as necessary so that it's more easy to accommodate scooters as well as one thing? And then the BMX track as a second item? Which actually takes us back to a longstanding wish to have a BMX track somewhere, doesn't it?
Yeah. Councillor Stutchbury. You're on mute, Robin.
I think going back to this track, we've got to realise the landowner is a different landowner now. The decisions that the use of that land may be something different. And if we end up in discussions about the use of that land period in the other discussions we'll have about with the council, whether we take areas over. It could be that we could return to this discussion with some strength. Because the trouble with having a facility in Lace Hill, it's a long way for the rest of the community to get to. And having it in the Heartland was always the best place. So should we not start a conversation either sooner or later after we've decided? Because we've got the, you know, we had the discussion about partly whether they'll move assets to us and whatever. I'm not sure where the town clerk wants to go with that because if we have this discussion now and get told no and then we decide as a council, we might take the Heartland on at a later stage if we were offered it. We would then wouldn't want anything precluding us from doing it. So I think we need to establish a good, strong case for why it should go there. There's the wildlife, eatable woodland below it. And the area which was always suggested was the area of the old sewage works. Which was the area which we all visited some time ago. And then we're told that's a great idea. And then somebody came back from the district council 12 months later and told us, no. So I think these all, it's how these discussions work really. We don't want to spoil one discussion. If we end up taking it over, it could be that it's our decision what we do thereafter. So I think I'd be interested after councillor Donnie's view with what the town clerk thinks the best way of proceeding it. Not to neglect it, but proceed properly on it.
Yeah, Lisa.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I was going to mention about the skate park going on Mike's point. When we were down there talking to the young people, they said that if the shelter was relocated just over a little bit, that there's actually quite a lot of unused space between the ramps and where the shelter is. And there's probably enough area there for the scooter risks to use. But a BMX track and a scooter track are very, very different things. But the young people down there, they've got some brilliant ideas. And I think that's one that hopefully if the young people are consulted, they'll get that point across with adults' help when we go down and help them.
Yeah, thank you.
I was interested in the town clerk's view on how to proceed.
Town clerk, thank you.
So just to backtrack slightly, one of the reasons this was on the agenda was following a discussion about Lace Hill last week. So this was quite, to have that bit of discussion around, we don't think it's appropriate to have something out of Lace Hill. Just to be honest and open about that, rather than let expectation grow by something that might not happen.
Yeah.
The primary reason for having the discussion tonight. I put the thing in about Morton Road just because that's where we are of those discussions. And at some point, we need to have a think about, well, actually, if that did go ahead against our wishes, is that then what we'd want there? Sometimes that's what we have to do with S106. You have to kind of take of your what you'd want if something you don't want to happen did happen. So actually, that is a bit of an issue, do we think if it did go ahead, we'd want some kind of BMX pump track down there? And in terms of councillor Stutchbury's question about where does this fit in with devolution? Obviously, in an ideal world, we would agree shortly to take on Hartlands freehold from Buckinghamshire Council in a devolution arrangement. And then we could crack on and do what we chose to with it. The negotiations are ongoing, but they will take longer than we expect and I'll be updating full council because that comes in. It's a difficult one, certainly with, I've approached Buckinghamshire Council about the bandstand or that whatever it is we'd like to put in, that bawdy bit of Hartlands. And we didn't get a no, but we did get 15 questions that we'd have to answer before they even considered discussing it, I don't think. And that's a big piece of work for us to do to get those answers together. So we're not at a point of working in close partnership, but neither are we at a point of being told no about things. So there is a bit of a discussion, a judgment to now take, should we put lots of effort in to try and persuade? Or should we hold our breath for 18 months and see where we get to? It's probably best to wait a couple of months, I guess, and then take a view where we are.
Thank you, and Margaret.
Thank you, just to say that I think for similar reasons that Lace Hill may not be the best place to have this proposed track. So maybe Morton Road wouldn't be so great either because neither of them are in the town centre. Or anywhere, they're both on the periphery of the town. And I think although it would be good to have it there rather than not at all, I think we should probably hold out to try and get it somewhere more central. And hopefully, maybe it will end up in the Hartlands Park if we have more power over that space in due course.
Mike and then Anthony.
Thank you, Chair. If the BMX park, BMX track element is subject to sort of land availability and so forth, can we at least agree that we press for the refurbishment of the skate park to also include a scooter track?
Yeah.
And that shelter, the youth shelter, although it was a good idea at the time, back in 2006/07, it does seem to be the source of some issues, I'll put it no stronger than that. So we could take, you know, we, I think, could be quite happy in that being removed to make room for the scooter facility.
Thank you, Anthony.
I would find it helpful to know roughly what sort of area of land would be required for a BMX track. And secondly, are there criteria if people are going to take it terribly seriously? We know, it appears in the Olympics now, is there a physical size and shape that is required for higher level competition? So two questions there.
Good points, and we'll look into those, and Lisa.
Thank you, Chair, just to come back again on Mike's point about the shelter. I think it's a shame because the young people down there that are using the skate park, how it's meant to be used, when it rains, they do need somewhere to shelter. And the shelter as it is, it's not fit for purpose because it's just got a roof and no sides. And that was, that was a police requirement many years ago so that they could see through it. But they're all now perfect and you can see through perfects. So things like that can be achieved. But I think I do need to shelter down there, it could be sighted somewhere else. And I just wish the police would do a job and sort out the elements that shouldn't be down there that have been plaguing the skate park for many years. Thank you.
Yeah, and Robin.
Through you, Chair, am I taking it that we are minded to carry on to pursue the BMX track?
Yes.
And we're going to look at that post any other discussions and the skate park thing. Those, the cabinet member is going to come back and the town council will be part of the consultation on the uplift of the skate park anyway. And his correspondence to my questions and the youngsters petition was very similar in the sense that he wants to get it done in the new year. What we can't do is rewrite what they've agreed. So I think, from what I understand, they can very much use both facilities with the trikes. And they can do both things on them. The trouble is that in the end, I expect when it's built, it'll want somebody else's bit on it. But we don't want to slow it down, we want to get it in. Because youngsters have been promised this so many times. That was the prime objective when they met councillor Donoghue and councillor Harvey and myself and Amanda down there, was their sheer disappointment that councillors promising them stuff and never delivering it. So let's not be another person who gets another protracted conversation to slow down the delivery of it. I think officers are in contact with them and we're going to be part of the consultation. So we'll have to be advocates for their position. But I think that going forward, the world will change. It might take 18 months on the BMX track, it might take longer, but it's well worth waiting. And as Anthony said, we need to know what we actually want to build for a start.
Yeah, yeah, we'll find out more.
If it's not going to fit in there and it isn't going to be suitable, it's a waste of money there, isn't it? So he's quite right to say that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do more research on the bike thing and BMX track. And we look forward to the work being, the upgrading to be done on the skate park. Yeah. Is that okay for everyone?
Hopefully our mayor will get invited to the opening as well.
Yeah.
And try it out.
And try it out, yeah.
Item nine is a wonderful item on the agenda, I'm very pleased to see it. I love all the information board on Scots Lane, I look at it most days and each month I take a photograph of it. Yeah, so thank you very much for that, Nina. I'm hoping that we will all welcome it and fully approve it, Mike.
Yeah, I share your enthusiasm for it. I just have one query though, and we're talking about a £25 donation towards the cost of materials of Fiona Hancock, which given the number of items that are being produced, doesn't seem to me to be a particularly generous contribution. Is that a figure that she suggested or something that we've plucked out of the air?
No, it's absolutely, I've been in conversation with Fiona and it was an amount that she had suggested. And she also said she was very happy to do something for her community that was giving back. So that was an amount to cover the cost of the art paper for her watercolours.
Hmm, terrific, because, you know, the wildflowers have caused a lot of enthusiasm. And it would be wonderful to have the information board so that people can pick up, you know, the names of them and everything else. Margaret, Lisa, then Robin, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I wholeheartedly look forward to this, I think it's absolutely great. But I do share Mike's view that maybe we could be more generous, even if she's not seeking payment as such, which I guess if you were paying her for the hour, it would be a lot of money. But whether there's some other way we can show our appreciation in addition to this contribution towards the materials. And, you know, like many, I always stop and look at the board when I can see it's in Scots Lane, when I see it's something different. I think it's absolutely great and it's wonderful that she's prepared to do something similar for Buckingham town.
Lisa.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm happy to agree to recommendations. And I recall a conversation at TCME when we were going to give money to a quiz master during a fringe and that amount was upped because they had done such a good job. So I wonder whether something similar can't be done in this instance because I also agree that, yeah, it's nice to cover an artist's equipment and supplies, but it's, you know, you're going to be doing a really good job and a service to the community. So I would also be in favour of upping that slightly.
And Robin.
I'd be happy to second councillor Donnie's suggestion and probably pay double £50. But what I'd further like to say is that this is a sheer success story. Because when we first transferred some money back in the day over to do planting wildflower meadows and then it took Lee some time to build up the resources to be able to bring this forward, it came from events and was transferred to Environment to be able to pursue it. But he's actually achieved something with the teens, wonderful. We've got these wonderful wild meadows which everybody is complimenting on, which is doing what we really wanted to do, which was before we had an environmental ethos of the council which was to encourage butterflies and wildlife bees. You only have to stand down there in the summer and you can see the success of these things with the amount of wildlife and stuff going on in them. So and it has showed the parks in a better light. So these notice boards are an informative addition to that. But we don't sing our praises for the council. It may have taken us longer to achieve this than what we wanted to in the first place. But it's definitely become a feature of the town and a regular feature on social media. People going down there photographing it and saying how much they like it, so.
So we fully support it and we're suggesting a donation of £50 rather than £25. Is everyone in agreement?
I'd go further than that, I'd round it up to 100 because you have to consider that it's not just the paper, which I know is expensive. But it's also her paints, you know, brushes wear out, et cetera, et cetera.
I have to get over that.
She's probably going to have two or three goes at each one anyway. Call it £100 in my view.
What do you think, Nina, is that okay?
It's difficult for me to comment, I'm sure she would be, you know, happy with that. She did want to stress that she is not a professional artist, this is, she's obviously very skilled at what she does. But she calls it her hobby and she does it for the love of, for the love of her wildlife and the fact that she really enjoys watercolours. But I'm sure she would be very happy with that, Sam.
Okay, thank you very much. And item.
Well, we haven't voted on it, Chairman.
We need a formal vote.
As we'll have just agreed or would like to. So I'd propose that our second councillor's proposal for £100.
All in agreement? Thank you. That's unanimous. Item 10, cattle pens finger post.
Yeah.
Verbal update from Lee.
Yeah, just to update everyone, we're progressing with it. I've written the specification and I'm in conversation with Buckinghamshire Council because their landowner is there to sort out things, you know, risk assessments, method statements, insurances and all that kind of stuff, so things are progressing. We've got a list of contractors and we're just about to go out tender, so it couldn't be too long now.
Thank you. Okay. Item 11, town action commission. And we've got the report from the estates manager. And we said we'd also discuss Ian's comments at the beginning of the meeting. Lisa.
Thank you, Chair. It's just a quick question, who is on the tree wardens group, please?
Margaret, myself, I think Robin's a tree warden as well, aren't you, Robin? Sorry, can't hear you again.
Yes, you were lucky there, yes, I am a tree warden.
Yeah.
Can I come back for another question then, is that okay?
Yes.
Sorry, because it said about sending, having somebody from the town council be on the group. But if there's three of you on it, then there doesn't need to be anybody else. Unless anybody else wants to, but thank you.
Yeah, and altogether Nina was telling me we've got 24 tree wardens in Buckingham and 17 of them are active or keen, active and keen. And I was saying that I've had contact from a tree warden in the south of the county who thinks it's wonderful that Buckingham's got so many tree wardens. And he's been in contact with Bill Chapel at Buckinghamshire Council saying how wonderful it is that Buckingham have all these tree wardens. Robin.
I think this action plan is good and it's showing everything that we're doing. But what I think we need to do is, as we work through this action plan, is compile this into information for what we are doing, what the officers are doing and what work we are doing to progress it. Because while it sits in our action plan, it's a sterile document for many members of the public who are asking questions like Ian is because he hasn't got sight of our action plan of what we're doing. Which necessitates questions which are well meaning but not completely reflecting what's going on. So could I propose that we turn this action plan into something that can be taken forward to one of our publications about a short article about what the action plan actually does, what it's entitled, why it was started and how we're monitoring it constantly. And how we are concerned about all those elements that Ian quite rightly brings to us. Because we can communicate that through our own magazine which we send out. And it's a good story we can tell and it's accurate because it's deeds, actions, plans, positive moves forward and just to show that we are taking this stuff seriously. Because if other public read this plan, they'd realise we were. We need to communicate that better.
Yeah, and we are planning on sort of sharing the town in two areas, aren't we, Lee? So that tree wardens can be responsible. There's about six areas of the town, so we probably have more than one tree warden for each area. So that we can record the trees and make sure we've got TPOs on ones that need them that don't already have them and suggest areas for further tree planting. Is there something you'd like to add, Lee?
Yeah, that was the key one for the tree wardens going forward. I'd really like them to get, yeah, split into areas and find tree planting areas. Because we do get quite a lot of requests or, you know, donations for memorial trees or bigger planting schemes. And it'd be good as an outcome of that, that we could have some definite areas of areas we know that needed tree planting. So if someone comes to us and say, I wanted to donate money or trees, we can say, what about here, what about there? But that takes a bit of doing, you know, the first stage will be to get the tree wardens to do this survey. And then probably myself and in contact with whoever the landowners are, we can work out where is suitable for tree planting in the future, which I think will be really useful for the town as a whole.
Definitely. Okay, thank you, Robin and then Mike.
Well, Mike hasn't spoken, I'll wait and let Mike speak because it's only appropriate. What I'm going to say is to follow up what I said earlier.
Mike.
I'm just looking at item S4 on top of page six of the action thingy.
Yeah.
And I just wonder if we could go back to Ian and ask him how Buckingham society are progressing with the outstanding trees in town trails leaflet bit.
Yes. Good question.
I think that the town trails leaflet for the trees would actually stimulate interest in the whole thing and may even encourage some more people to come forward as wardens.
Definitely, because Michael Hunt did a couple of tree trails and I did go on one of them. And it was wonderful, all the different trees that. And it was wonderful, all the different trees that you wouldn't necessarily notice and all the different species that there were. And then they did a second trail, which was the same trees. And then they were getting people to say which trees were their favourite ones. And then this leaflet was going to come out of it. And yeah, I thought it was nearly ready about eighteen months ago. So it is a good idea to go back and ask him. Thank you. Robyn?
Yeah, thank you. I did propose, and it wasn't seconded or whatever, that we work up an article to explain this and the work that goes on, so that they can see that it's an ongoing thing.
I'm happy to second that, Robyn.
Yeah, and just to make comment, today I did communicate to the Chair and Vice Chair in the office that we had an offer of some more trees. I'm not sure where that goes. I've also communicated that to the Community Board, because it was quite a number of trees. But can I ask that? Because I'm not sure on the time span of when they're available and I'm not sure on Lee's ability to be able to use them. But that was only come through today, so it could not be on the agenda. But the Chairman and Vice Chairman were in that correspondence. And it just looked quite a good thing, two thousand trees available. I just thought it was a good offer. I mean, how we progress that, I'm sure the Office and the Chairman and Vice Chairman could do that if at all possible, but.
Yeah, there's no harm in sending an email around the tree wardens as well to ask if they've got any suggestions. Yeah, thank you, Robyn. And Mike?
Yeah, sorry to come back, Gemma. The article that Robyn was referring to, I think that would fit neatly in the spring newsletter, don't you?
Yeah, definitely.
So perhaps.
That's the next one due, isn't it? Because we've completed the autumn one, yeah.
Yeah, so perhaps we could pencil that across to Louise to get a page and a half in there or something of the other. And maybe one of the people that knows one tree from another, which I don't, could put something together based on this.
Yeah, Lee and I and Margaret can help as well. Margaret?
Thank you. I just wondered, I'm not sure about the timing of it, but it could be a press release as well.
Yeah.
Trees, something, but you've got to time it. I mean, if that, you know, the trees you're referring to earlier, Robyn, these two thousand trees, if that came off, then that would be an excellent press release. But, you know, you've just got to hit it at the right time.
But with Chairman Lamick, I wasn't sure where we were with that. And that's why I didn't make any comment on it. I forwarded it on to both yourself and councillor New and Lee and that and copy the town clerk. Because I didn't think it was appropriate for me, as neither being chaired, to pursue that. Because you'll have a better idea of whether we've got space or grounds. Even if we only took a few of them, it would promote that scheme to other villages. And it's about the environment per se, isn't it? So, I mean, members can't see that correspondence, but I'm happy if that can be circulated to the members so that they can circulate it to whoever they know as well. Because it's not wherever the trees get planted in Buckingham. It's like the trees get planted in Buckinghamshire, isn't it?
Yes.
You know. But I don't think it's appropriate for me to do that. I'd rather it come from the office.
Yeah. Yeah, Lee can send it round or I could send it round after this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, that's my agenda. And thank you for putting that informative report together, Lee. That's really helpful.
Are the recommendations okay on there? Do you want me to follow them?
So we wanted the income budget line to be agreed for tree planting and precept a thousand pounds. Is that agreed? And recommended officers set up a meeting with a tree warden group to see how that will progress and any training that the tree wardens may want. And that the committee nominator councillors join this group as a rep of the council. And that the tree wardens are asked to carry out an initial survey to identify potential tree planting locations, opportunities around the town and any other opportunities for schemes, i.e. hedgerow restoration work. And recommended that the planning and neighbourhood plan issues raised are referred to the neighbourhood plan subcommittee for consideration. So all excellent recommendations. Margaret and then Mike.
I think Mike had his hand up first, actually.
Well, it doesn't matter. I've called you.
Okay, thank you. Just to say, I think it was Mike's question about, do we need a specific council? Council of.
That was Lisa that asked that at the beginning.
Because you and I are on the group. I don't think I'm actually a tree warden, but I'm on the subgroup. I don't know whether that's correct, but whether we wanted somebody more independent. But I would have thought two councillors may be sufficient. But I'm open to your views on that, everyone.
I'd think you make a good case.
That's why I asked it, stop.
Yeah. So I was thinking that the group was the tree warden group. But you're thinking that there's a town action commission group? Is that right?
There are trees subgroup or something of that nature. Have I got that completely wrong without looking up? You know, when we get that list of things to tick in May for what committees we want to be on and which subgroups?
The planning, a planning tree subcommittee group for planning things for Catherine.
Yes, and in the short term, it is referred to as tree subcommittee.
And that's separate from tree wardens, is it?
Never was historically. Historically, the tree wardens were on the planning committee and then they were in the council and it's sort of moved backwards and forwards. But I'd be interested where Nina thinks we defined it now.
What, sorry, Robyn?
Because historically, tree wardens were to do with the planning committee many years ago, because planning used to meet straight after full council or before full council. And then things changed and then it became, tree wardens were part of planning and then they became part of Environment as well, because we broadened it out. I just want to know where we define that they for. I think it's the council, not the committee, my understanding of it. Because, but if Nina could say where she thinks it's defined now what they are, it'd be useful.
My understanding was that we reinvigorated the Buckingham tree warden scheme following the town action commission in 2016, which came out of Environment Committee and then full council afterwards as recommendations. And we had a number of people that came forward to be volunteer tree wardens from that. We've met a number of times and then obviously we communicate with them via email. We've, I mean, we've had a number of people that have also joined tree wardens in the last year or so. So we haven't met formally, I would say, since then. But yes, we haven't met as a subcommittee in any form. I know Catherine certainly consults with them for planning reasons. But that doesn't take place as a formal subcommittee.
I think that's pretty much where I thought we were, Nina. But I think maybe everyone's still talking about it, but we're not actually meeting, which doesn't mean anybody's not doing anything. It's just it's all online in the sense by email and correspondence. Catherine's been really active in recent months on these matters and compiling a list of all the trees missing. So, you know, we are active, but I don't know where we go with it from there on, whether it's a specific action.
Yeah, because I was thinking that the tree subgroup were tree wardens. But as Margaret was saying, it's a different thing, because Margaret's not a tree warden, but she is on the tree subgroup. Is that right?
I think it was me misunderstanding what the tree subgroup was though now. I didn't realise it was specific.
I'm confused.
Planning.
Yeah.
We don't need to name them, Gemma, and that's just all about tree wardens.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So are we all happy with the recommendations?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. That's agreed then. Item twelve, we've already covered. So now we're on to item thirteen, which are the budgets. Thirteen point one are the latest budget figures.
Noted, Gem.
Great.
Thank you. Item thirteen point two, to receive the revised budget forecast. That includes the impact of COVID nineteen. So we've got the sheet with the minuses. Yeah, thank you.
We can't actually do anything about that. And it's ongoing.
No.
Less the town clerk's got some concern he wants to express. We can only note that because it will change and may improve, may get worse.
And thirteen point three, to receive and discuss a written report proposing the draft budget for twenty one, twenty two and the revised draft five year budget. And you've got the papers for that.
You can't agree to it.
Yeah, I didn't see anything that jumped out at me that I wasn't happy with. Sorry, Robyn.
It's not anything to change. I kept flicking through it and I presume that the money we got allocated in earmarked reserves for cemetery would then come back into this budget if we need it, depending on the new cemetery side, I didn't make myself clear. That money's in earmarked reserves. But do we need an empty catalyst of a figure in here for it to come back into? Depending on how fast we can move this new cemetery project forward. Because we don't know, there, I didn't see a figure there. If I've missed it, Town Clerk and Chair, I'm happy to do. But I presume that that money in earmarked reserve, which was about fifty thousand pounds, was what would be the money for the project. Because it looks odd to have a precept going forward this year where we haven't mentioned the new cemetery. Anyone reading that would think that we were no longer pursuing that. And if it's somewhere and I've missed it, I'm happy to apologise. Just an explanation around that. It's such a big project to not talk about.
Paul, would you like to respond and then Margaret would like to speak?
Thank you. So in code two, five, three, under four, two, six, five, which is on page five, there's a maintenance budget for the new cemetery and there's, I don't think I wrote a budget. And there's also a new cemetery repayments budget. And that goes forward over the next continually. So we're building in that into the future as well. So the money that we put into earmarked reserves is what we didn't spend on loan repayments last year, which was the initial development costs. But we are budgeting in running the cemetery and paying the loan off into the future once we have the loan.
And would I be correct, Town Clerk, that if we were able to move forward with that quicker than we are presently, that money would come back into committee to progress those loan payments anyway?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we wouldn't need to precept it for the first twelve months anyway, because we've already got it.
It's in the precept as well. So that would be to pay for the design work and initial costs. And if we need to borrow a bit less, then we'll knock that off the amount we borrow. So hopefully.
Yeah. So we've covered, that's all we need to know. Because if suddenly we can move on with that scheme. We, only one question on, I can do that, I'll do that outside the meeting, that's fine.
Okay, Margaret?
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to say it is there. I just wondered, just for clarity, whether in future, where it says two, five, three cemetery, it's immediately under a bold Borton Park net expenditure. It might be easier to spot it if you had the cemetery in bold underneath or, and perhaps a bit of a break, because it does look as though that's all part of Borton Park, because of the thing about it being not only in bold but in capitals.
Yeah, thank you. We'll note that. Thank you. Item fourteen, access awareness. Margaret?
Sorry, I'm jumping the gun. I was looking at the following agenda items.
That's okay. As far as I'm aware, the access group isn't meeting. It's something that Chris Train Clark and myself were on. Okay, item sixteen, Margaret?
Yeah, thank you. Obviously, we received quite a long sort of letter or report from the group, mainly focusing on needing a new chair. All that was part of it. But I attended the meeting, as did Robyn. And I don't know how, I haven't talked to Robyn since, but I found it a really positive meeting, inspirational. There's lots of really good work going on from the Bucks Council team with particularly rough sleepers. And a lot of this was going on before, but the trigger of the COVID nineteen and the government's commitment to getting people off the street resulted in, really effectively, and the team went out and got everybody in, which was the idea. And they couldn't go into the usual hostel accommodation because of COVID. But accommodation was found and we were given some case histories as well, which again were inspirational, I thought, highlighting the kind of work that's been going on during lockdown. Teams have been out on the streets, even when the officers were having to work from home. The teams were out there making sure people got the provision that they needed. And I think it's been a really good news story. Just a few things to pick out. There's still, you may know this already, there's a moratorium on evictions until March twenty one.
Yeah.
They need a new chair for the group and it shouldn't be an officer. But there are loads of voluntary agencies involved and were represented at the meeting. And they all highlighted the work they're doing. The minutes will come out and we'll make sure they're circulated. One of the Bucks Council priorities is the Buckinghamshire Home Choice. And it was confirmed there, partly because of Robyn asking a question, that there's no change to the sub allocation policy. So even though home choice is for the whole county now, the different parts of the county will be prioritised for the local people. Excuse me. And the everyone in initiative, getting rough sleepers off the streets because of COVID. There's the next steps to follow up on that, which is after March, so that the people who've been accommodated don't find themselves back on the streets. They talked about pathways to settled accommodation for these people. Because I think there's a huge amount of progress has been made over the months since the everyone in initiative. And it's really good that there are plans now to keep people in and get suitable accommodation. A couple of accommodation projects are in the pipeline. Youth Concern have got a nine bed unit for eighteen to twenty five year olds opening very shortly. They also run a night stop. I know that's Aylesbury based, but you know, it's good news that that initiative is coming to fruition. And there are another unit, fifteen units in Ayles. And there, and another unit, 15, um, units in Aylesbury with, is being made available with other funding. And I think, I think I got it right, that it was a former office block that's being converted into these units. And, and the target tenants are people who've been homeless. There, there were one or two things said about, um. Because a lot of people have ended up homeless in the past, because when they apply for accommodation, they, they're not assessed as a priority. I mean, we might see them as a priority if they're homeless, but it doesn't automatically follow. And, um, there've been ways of getting around that for the current situation. And identifying that, um, they should be a priority, whether they haven't been. And also, there was a group in South Bucks who've been working with mainly Eastern European people coming in, who aren't, um. They're not entitled to, um, go on any kind of waiting list or they have no recourse to public funds. But work has been done to make sure that they can get some funding. And there's an expert in the field from Hillingdon who's assisting somebody in South Bucks. And we understand that they're trying to make sure that things that happen in South Bucks also happen in North Bucks, so. Um, that was encouraging too. So I came out of the meeting, I don't know whether Robin saw it any differently from me, feeling that there was a lot of good work and goodwill, uh, going on. And it all seemed to be very good news to me.
Thank you very much for that, um, full feedback, Margaret, that was very interesting. Robin?
Yeah, Margaret's covered most of it very adequately. When you look deep into it, COVID did provide an opportunity because of the online working to pull teams together differently. As Margaret said, what the problem is, is the funding support which is in place now. Some of these funding schemes come to an end. And, and also there was a recognition in, um, from them in questioning. Um, that they don't know what the future holds in the sense that, um, mental health. And people presenting with homelessness through mental health and, and through COVID and because it's hidden. So they're well aware that they're only, they're dealing with the problems, to be fair to them, really very well, as Margaret says, and they've been working together. But they do recognise that they're only, there's a problem coming. And it's the funding which was helped them to resolve these issues, isn't permanent funding. So, you know, um, but it was really, especially, I think the last 10 minutes of the meeting was really uplifting. When you heard of some local cases in Buckingham which have been resolved and, um. And some not so close to Buckingham, so I think Margaret's really right, but I, being as my nature is to look for where the problem will be. Um, I think the problem's coming forward in the future, because that's how you assess it. But Margaret's quite right in what her expression about the positive work that they've done. I think it wouldn't be above us to actually, um, if Margaret agrees, to write to them and say that we've discussed it and we're really grateful for the time. The officers have devoted to this, because so often they don't get a thank you from anybody. Um, and if Margaret thinks it's agreeable, I, I think we should send it. We've discussed it and that we are grateful for the work they're undertaking. I think because, you know, they don't get a thank you very often, because their job isn't very attractive. Some of them go out at the middle of the night, um, talking to people, to talk them down, to try and get them into housing. They're really special people and, um, and we should thank them. Would you agree, Margaret?
Yeah, to be, oh, sorry, through your chair, can I respond to that?
Yeah.
Um, when I came back or recovered, came away from the meeting, I, it's almost as though I was there, even though it was Zoom. After the meeting, I did feel as though I wanted to respond in some way, saying. Um, how delighted I was with the work that was going on there, because I, I really did feel quite uplifted by it. And the way that different agencies and voluntary organisations, faith groups, charities, et cetera, were all working together. Um, uh, in such a positive way.
Mike?
It, it seems to be all a good news story and, you know, I'm, I'm really grateful for it. I've got a couple of questions if I may, Chair.
Yeah.
One, one is, do we know the extent of homelessness in Buckingham, Buckingham area? And secondly, um, Margaret mentioned, um, some accommodation for the homeless that was previously former office blocks and that. Or office, former office building. Now, there have been reports about how unsuitable these are. Um, I'm, I'm suggesting probably for long-term, um, let rather than a short-term amelioration of being homeless. But I, I wonder if there's any indicators from the meeting that Margaret's reported on about those two areas. Numbers in Buckingham affected and the suitability of the temporary accommodation.
Yeah, Margaret?
Yeah, thank you for that. Well, on the suitability of the accommodation, um, it was said that they would be in, people would only be there for a maximum two years. And they would be enabled to move on. It was, it wasn't, um, being suggested it was permanent accommodation. Um, but it was being, I think that's, I think this is correct, I'm not, I'm, 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 I'm trying to remember the detail. We will get the minutes in due course, of course. Um, but I think the buildings were being adapted specifically for that purpose. Sorry about that, but we weren't given any Buckingham-specific.
No.
Statistics, we were given statistics for Buckinghamshire, um, but that probably isn't very helpful. I know the Salvation Army have been quite proactive in, in this, but it may be that they would have some figures, I don't know.
Margaret, I don't, I don't think.
Yeah, certainly, Mike.
Um, for a maximum of two years, that sounds okay, until you put COVID over the top of it. And if you're, you're stuck in a sort of a, kind of a plywood box for two years because of lockdown, that, that is very bad for. People who are probably struggling, um, with life anyway, so I'm a wee bit concerned about that. And I would like a little bit more information if, if it's available. And so far as the numbers are concerned, I, I think it's probably fairly important that we know some sort of. Area breakdown, if you like, within the counties to where they're, I, I, I understand from other quarters that, that there's been quite a bit of a pickup. Of homeless in the Wickham area, but I don't know about the other areas and I, I, I think it would be interesting to know that.
Yeah. Robin?
Mike makes always, he's bang on in, in his expression of concerns. The thing is, when we come away here and it's positive things, it's the future problems which are cause for them and he's bang on with that. Because we do need to ascertain that, quite, um, how we ask those questions without making them. Because the officers are very much in, 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 in the field of fire, reacting, um, um, in a firestorm. But he's bang on, Mike, I express concerns about COVID and the way it comes out and mental health. And the officer are aware of it, but they can't, they're just reacting at the moment to what they've got. Um, but I think we do need to know the numbers in Buckingham and North Buckinghamshire, because. Um, and it, and the Salvation Army won't have those figures because they're not a statutory authority, it'll have to be the council. And they're very good at defining figures over the veil and then the other area, same as they do COVID, they're very good at putting it in with ours, Bree. So the real figure in bucket, it might be difficult for them to ascertain. Much, probably was much easier with a district, to be honest, because of the scale of what they were doing. But I think Mike's right, we need to define that.
Margaret?
Thank you, I know the, the mental health issue did come up quite regularly during the course of the meeting. And I think I'm right in saying they've actually got a mental health, a new appointment of somebody with a mental health background for, within the housing team. Um, I'll be interested to read the minutes and just check that out, but I think that's what was said. And certainly, there are a lot of experts in the field working in the homeless sector anyway, mainly in the voluntary sector. But I'm pretty sure they'd got a mental health professional now embedded within the housing and homelessness team.
Just, just to progress it, Chairman, would it be, once Margaret and I get the minutes? Would you be happy that Margaret and I take on board the concerns of the meeting? And put together something between us to actually follow this up, to represent the views of the meeting? Um, because the minutes might answer some of these questions.
Yes. Yeah, and the minutes can be circulated to the committee as well, can't they, to us?
And if they, if it needs going sooner, we can do it in other ways.
Yeah.
Margaret and I spoke about it.
Yeah, that would be great.
I was so pleased to see her there, because I thought they hadn't invited her at one point.
Yeah, um, Mike and then Margaret again.
I, I would hope that the minutes be circulated to the full council, rather than just.
Yes.
Odd bits of it.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, I went to one of the meetings and I, and they were circulated to full council. Margaret?
Just to say, I've got 11 and a half pages of handwritten notes from the meeting, if anyone's interested in me photocopying them. Whether anyone else will be able to read them, I'm not sure.
That explains why you gave us such a wonderful report, Margaret. Thank you.
Did you not type them up, Margaret?
Thank you, thank you, um, everyone for that item. And next item is news releases, I think we probably want to do an update on trees in Buckingham. And what we're planning as well as putting it in the newsletter. Are there any other news releases? Robin and Mike?
I think, you know, the fact that we're doing stuff all the while, uh, with, with the park, the fact that we're looking at the skate park.
Yeah.
Project, because when the skate park project comes to us. I think we should agree that we'll do a news release of our reaction to the project. Because it, it might come to us between meetings to look at. And we, we might not be able to discuss it in a meeting because of the timing of it. But it was very much something that Buckingham Town Council has pursued. To get it into the section 106 in the first place. It may be that it was meant to be delivered by the district, but will be delivered by Buckinghamshire Council. But it was historically something, probably going back 10 years or so, that this town council sought to have. So even though it's them who are delivering it on the land which they are custoding it off, it was a project that we asked for. So we, we shouldn't, um, we shouldn't be above actually saying that.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, I think we should agree that we'll do a press release irrespective with the chairman and vice chairman on that, when it, when it comes forth.
Thank you, Mike?
Yes, I, I was going to suggest that, um, we did something on the skate park, scooter park or scooter track and BMX track as well. Because there has been some social media criticism, um, and, and I think it's, as Robin says, it, it's good for us to sort of say. How we're pushing and what we're pushing for, et cetera.
Yeah.
I also wonder, um, the, the item we just discussed, the, the homelessness prevention forum and that. Um, it, it's, I'm, I'm assuming that the forum itself will be putting out its own publicity in that. But I wonder if it's something that we should mention in our next newsletter, perhaps as a fairly short item. Um, because of the, the increasing awareness of, um, mental health issues. Particularly if you're kind of locked down in, in a, in a place where, which hasn't got any outside space. I, I think that is going to be one of the biggest longer-term problems of COVID.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a great idea. Robin?
I think that we should do, so if we, if we could either do, the, the way I look at it, we've got councillor Gately and we're attending these things as councillors. And, and we're doing these things and officers are there to support. But maybe we should carry something about mental health per se, because it's come up in several places, um, mental health in the past period. It's something that people talk about, but it always really gets neglected. It's a Cinderella thing, when it's popular in the press, every politician talks about mental health. And then when it comes to funding it, they don't talk about it, it gets sidelined. Um, and, um, 25 people are going to have a mental health crisis in their, their life and, 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 you know, at least. So, um, that's quite tragic and, and young people. The rise in mental health in young people is known to be on the rise and, um, mental health problems. And when we come out of COVID, um, we're going to have lots of mental health problems to deal with, with suppressed grief. Um, young, and, and with the older generation who haven't been able to express themselves. So it will never be a more important subject, um, because of COVID than it ever has been. It's suppressing the problem. So I don't know how we do that, but apart from focus on the awareness of it. And, and, and that we are concerned about wellbeing and mental health within the community.
Yeah.
How we phrase that without stepping into what is public health. Um, I'm still waiting for a response from the, um, health officer to a response, which will be a written question if you don't respond to me soon.
Um. Okay.
But I do think we do need to push on it, because if there's services there that people can access. Before COVID, young people could not get an appointment to be assessed.
Yeah, we need to, sorry, just to, um. Move on, we've still got a few items on the agenda. Um, item 17, chairs announcements. Thank you all for your attendance and thank you to the officers for their reports. And, um. Doing such a good job. The date of our next meeting is the 14th of December. And item 9.